We will now convene this June 5th meeting of the Centerville Town Council. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to defy the United States' power, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have Agenda Review.
Madam President, may I say something?
Yes. Go for it.
As follow-up to our moment of silence, I would like for us to take a moment to acknowledge the outstanding service and life-saving actions of a couple of our officers of the Centerville Police Department. This past weekend, on Sunday morning, early Sunday morning, like 1:00 in the morning, Officers Ford and DeCrispino responded to an emergency call for a shooting outside of town. And thankfully, with the mutual aid agreements in place, they were able to respond. They were the first on-site. They secured the scene, administered some life-saving measures for a couple of the individuals, and held on until the county sheriff's office and the state could get there. But I'm so proud of our police department for being ready, present, and able to respond like this when called upon. And I know that if it was required of the sheriff's office of the state to come to our aid in town, they would as well. I think if any other of our officers had been on duty at that time, they would have responded just as respectfully and heroically. So anyway, I wanted to say how proud I am of these two particular officers, Ford and DeCrispino, but also our force in general.
Yeah.
Thank you for saying that. I agree. Just Chief, thank you to you and your team always. But I think it's particularly important how we work together with the other law enforcement agencies around.
I agree. It was just, you know, thank you so much. It was just a horrific incident that, you know, that was just horrifying. I'm sure for the officers when they arrived, but, you know, again, can't thank you enough, any officers.
All right. Any additions or changes to the agenda? No? Okay. Next up is-
Can I offer a comment about the agenda?
Yes.
Sorry. Ordinance 08-2025 should be on the agenda, but it's my fault that it's not. I was unable to get with our town attorney in a timely fashion. I did work with Will this week on it, and I think he has some copies to hand out, not intended for first reading or consideration or anything, but just to get a version in your hands, sort of the basic skeleton of the ordinance as we've discussed, and then some proposed amendments that we've talked about, but I thought we should vote on individually. So my apologies for not coming through in a timely fashion, but we'll bring it back up as soon as we can.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jim. All right, next up, we have review of past meeting minutes. In your packet, you have the minutes for the May 15, 2025 council meeting. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I have none.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next up, we have our citizens forum. Citizens are requested to keep their comments to three minutes. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council? All right, cool. Next up, we have Jennifer Moore with a request from the farmer's market.
Good evening.
Evening.
I left with Gay this morning a summary of a couple of items. The first item that we wanted to ask about for the farmer's market was permission to try a Tuesday evening market. And it's been brought to my attention that there's also a Churchill Market that I think is at 4:00 to 6:00 that some people participate in on a different day, and we'd like to try the evening market. We'd like to try the evening market. We've had lots of requests for it, and last year at the end of the season, we had a number of vendors who said they were open to actually coming in and doing the evening as well. So we plan to keep it to probably about six vendors. It won't be a full market where we're asking to close the street. And the request is, in the past, when the market was during the week, if I recall, they were using the parking spaces right behind the memorial where the little enclave is. And to avoid closing Lawyer's Row for the two-hour period and during a commute traffic to get off of work, if we could use that same spot, I think with the vendors, we might be able to work with the police department to use those spaces and keep us off of using Broadway or Lawyer's Row during what would otherwise be a setup during the workday. So that's the request for the Tuesday night market, and I can answer any questions that might not be covered by the request.
When did you want to start this?
We thought we'd start it in June sometime, but it would be whenever we work out what plans would be acceptable. And if you'd like more of a plan, like a visual plan put together with those specifics, I can do that for you as well.
I would just overall love a meeting between the town and the market. I think public perception is that the market is a function of the town. And so, you know, I love the market. I practically live there on Sundays. I just would maybe like for that to be a conversation before we expand the market and expand the perception that it's a function of the town. When it's my understanding, the market doesn't desire to be a function of the town.
Correct.
But certainly enjoys privileges as if it were a function of the town, access to Town Hall and those sorts of things.
Okay. We can schedule the meeting, certainly.
Okay. What else?
The other is for Wednesday evening, excuse me, not a Wednesday evening, for the 29th of June, excuse me. And that is that we are hosting an event on our 29th, on the 29th of June for the farmer's market, and we're hosting the Waters Edge Museum from Oxford. And it's the potential for that to be a larger crowd is possible. It could be 100 or plus people that come for that. We already have permission from the county to use the lawn in front of the courthouse for the main event, and the market will be open on Sunday as normal. The event is to take place at approximately 11:00 a.m. It'll be for about an hour. And we want to make sure that if we have a larger crowd, that we keep them safe. And we'd like to know if we can use Broadway that morning for the same hours of the farmer's market. We could potentially use it for the guest's park with regard to the Waters Edge Museum and any equipment that they might bring to set up for their exhibit. They're going to be bringing items from their store and also their museum, and perhaps some other items to set up right in front of the courthouse. And the other is, in case we need the space, I'd like to be able to use the sidewalks and potentially those parking spaces if others bring chairs where we may have a little green to a reasonable capacity, that I can keep people safe who attend the event and use Broadway.
Yeah, I think that that sounds awesome. To me, I would feel comfortable, this is just me, anyone could have a different opinion, I would feel comfortable conditionally approving these requests, requiring that we have a meeting between the town and the farmer's market in the intervening time.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Just as long as it's timely because you want to move on. Again, I appreciate you wanting to kind of continue to grow the market and its capacity, you know, for the town. So that's lovely. So thank you. Thank you for all your efforts. And then again, this partnering, you know, on Waters Edge, that's great, you know, to bring things in town, in the historic district, you know, to bring people downtown. So thank you very much. So yeah, that would be my only thing, just so we can, you know, have that conversation quickly and just so you can move forward with your, you know, with your plans.
Yeah, and not, to me, not contingent on any outcome, like just contingent on the meeting happening.
Yeah, sure.
And so we can get that set right away, and then-
Is there a potential time that works best for you with work schedules and things? So I can let-
Carolyn and I will talk next week and get to you if that works.
Absolutely.
All right, cool. I'm excited about a Tuesday market and all of this.
Yeah.
Vendors are a good idea, yeah.
I think it's a good idea, too. I just, I want to make sure that we're coordinated. Any event this big that I think people believe is a function of the town, I want to make sure that we're coordinated.
I agree with that. And I think during the weekday is good because everybody, like, can't get to the weekend because they're off, they're somewhere else perhaps, and they can't get to the weekend market. So to do your shopping during the week before you get to the weekend, you know, I think that's fantastic. How are things, just for, how's the market going so far? I mean, any, like, better-
Very pleasant start to the 2025 season. We've been able to add activities. It hasn't been 105 yet.
Yes.
Because that really changed the market really quick in June of last year, and we saw like eight straight weeks of heat that just wouldn't allow for scheduling events because no one would stay for that. They were coming to the market, but they weren't staying, and that really changes. If you were there last week-
Oh, there's a ton of staying this year.
There was a ton of staying, and that's the whole environment is for the kids to be able to play almost like it's a Sunday fun day for them to come out, and they're safe on the green and they're safe inside the market space. Most of them know the vendors almost by name, so they can walk around all the vendors, and they know all the kids who come to the market every week.
Yeah, unfortunately, the vendors let my kids shop on credit, and then I just like, "Oh, everybody money" as I walked down the street, but-
The other is, and I apologize for not putting this on the note, but we were approved for SNAP this year.
Awesome.
So I'm going to be working with the Extension Office and the Maryland Department of Agricultural Staff to push out a full campaign to let folks around the county know that the market accepts SNAP.
That's great.
We'll be having WIC attend the market like we do every season, so there'll be, there's a whole new electronic process, so I'm working with them to understand that, so that when we have them there, we're properly advertising so folks know that they can come to the market and use SNAP and WIC and FMMP for our senior citizens. But it's been a good start to the season. I hope the weather cooperates. There's always fair season, and that's rain and heat, but if we can have at least another couple of weeks before all that kicks in, that'd be great.
So last question. So vendors, you know, when you opened, I was there, you know, representing the town, and you were thinking about trying to do, you know, some additional vendors, protein, things like that. Is that still the plan, perhaps?
Yeah, we still work on that. I still look for that regularly. I have a couple farms across the bridge. You have bison. We've had someone with chicken. We've been looking into seafood.
Right.
So there's things we're looking into. The market is highly sustainable for the vegetable flower baker space because it's a weekly product, you know, something you use on a weekly basis.
Right.
The proteins have been harder to sell at the market because not everyone comes every week looking for the protein. We had Dogwood Market for a long time, and they were excelling in the DC market, so they decided to go there full-time. And I've been looking for those to come in at least maybe once a month, so that at least I can advertise, "We have beef this month." We have chicken, or we have pork, or if we're lucky, we'll get the bison farm across the bridge. So we look for it regularly, and I'm hoping I can get at least something to plug in here and there. And the one I'm striving for right now is to try to find a seafood vendor who can come in throughout the season.
Oh, that would be awesome.
And find out what that looks like, and if they'll even do it once in a while, so we can have, like, attach it to a festival or something, but have them come in so that they can know what to do. At the very least, it helps local businesses. So if they come in and they can get the business at their spot, I'm perfectly happy doing drop-ins for those kind of things, so people can also drum up business for themselves.
Yeah, if you get a local seafood, you know, somebody who comes, it's local, and advertise ahead of time. I think a lot of people want to support a local, you know, they want that.
And everyone's been, we've all spoken about pre-orders, and Carol, when we were working on this during COVID, we had all the pre-order space happening because we were putting things in your car. And to go back to that, because places like Modern Stone Age, who are an established business in Chestertown, have their website, so they can do pre-orders on their website, and they do that very frequently. But if we could do that for the market, we'd love to see the vendors already have sales in the bank before they even show up.
To help them.
And it's really encouraged a lot of drop-ins, and that's been a product of, not everybody has the Sunday to do something, but almost all of them have three or four during the season, and we can mix up a lot of the vendors by having the drop-ins be an option. They don't have to commit to a 27-week season or even an 18-week season, but they enjoy coming down, and they have really good days when they're there. I try to do certain vendors during certain events because I know that's when they're going to get the biggest bang for their luck. So we pay, we pay attention to all of those things because we don't want them to not come back.
No, exactly. Well, thank you for, you know, everything you do.
And the food trucks have been an awesome addition, I think, especially in getting people to hang around.
And this past week, we started doing all the flyers for the churches. So all the flyers will go around to the churches, especially for them talking about come out for brunch after.
Oh, awesome.
So we're going to work on different pockets in the community to let them know that we're there on Sundays to come out and work on some seating arrangements and things like that.
Cool. It's been great this year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is the first year you did breakfast, right? The truck is doing breakfast food?
This is the first year that they signed on, and I always kid with Shannon that when she called and said she was coming, I'm like, "Well, so what days can you make it?" She goes, "No, every Sunday," and I cried on the phone.
That's good. Yeah, that's good.
It's, it's a huge addition for us, and it offers so much more for people to come and stay and actually have coffee.
Hang around.
Teas and things like that, so. We got thousands and thousands of requests for coffee.
Yeah. I would always be so bummed if it wasn't a week that Kraft was there, like, why?
It's a nice addition, and if they don't have something, Modern Stone Age can fill the space.
Yeah, and the loaded tea people are there, and that's just good. Awesome. Well, does someone want to make the motion? We do need a-
Right, oh, yeah. So I make a motion as it relates to the evenings from 6:00 to 8:00.
4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00, oh, sorry. 4:00 to 6:00. And then on June 29 for Waters Edge Museum at 11:00. To approve that, tentative as far as just for the meeting that you will have.
Awesome.
And for the purpose of your motion, does that also declare us with the ability to use to close Broadway on that day?
Yes.
So it'll be closed for the same hours as the market?
Yeah, I would say-
And then reopen it immediately?
Let's just make the motion contingent upon a meeting between the town and the market, approve these requests as made, whatever it is they need. Okay? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? The vendor spaces for the Tuesday night, is it, are you asking for on Commerce or are you asking on Lawyers from Commerce down?
Neither. I'm asking for the piece that's directly in front of the Alibi.
So yes, on Commerce.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So on Commerce.
On Commerce, where the Christmas tree is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, where the dining hall spaces are.
No, it's not. It's just, that's a, I don't, yeah, it's-
We're happy to be on Lawyers.
It's just a very busy spot from with, because that's the restaurants, like 15-minute pull-in, pull-out kind of thing. I just worry about that. I mean-
Well, Coliseum is still in, the ice cream place is still there, too.
Yeah, it is Sunday.
No, we're talking about Tuesday.
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 Chief, what is your thought on, like, I-
Do you think we should do the end of Lawyer's Row or those spots where we put the Christmas tree?
Then you got people coming off, wow.
Does the bank still close at 3:00?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Yeah. The one up is, the one up 2:13 is open later, but this one here is 3:00.
So in my opinion, I mean, I believe that Lawyer's Row would be a better fit simply because there's spots in front of where the Alibi is, is extremely busy between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. You're talking about afternoon rush hour. You're talking about people trying to stop, get food from the businesses, et cetera, et cetera. And we're reducing that amount of area for parking, for patrons, for the other businesses as well. Maybe doing it on Lawyer's Row further down, like I think the market had done before, like maybe towards the last few spaces or so, down this end.
Or, I mean, I don't know about you. The 15-minute spaces in front of the bank are usually open during that time? I mean, like, at the end of, that end of Lawyer's Row. But that's up to the council.
The other piece of the puzzle is, at some point in time, the police are going to have to go out there and put their parking up and try to remove any vehicles that are going to be in their spots, and that's relatively difficult during-
So the 15-minute spots in Lawyer's Row would be better, less likely to be occupied long-term.
And those are normally open for the most part. I mean, the rest of Lawyer's Row is full, but those are normally open, especially during that time.
So let's say that corner of Lawyer's Row in front of the bank.
Sure.
Yep.
And we're also going to keep it to a smaller amount of, you know, because I didn't go over 6:00 because then we know we have bakers and produce and maybe flowers or something, but we can keep it into a certain amount of parking space.
This gives you enough visibility in that same location. That shouldn't be an issue there as well.
Right. That's what I'm, I just worry about that area.
Modification of your, okay. You good with that as a second?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And I'll reach out to you.
Okay.
It's not like I don't talk to you, so. Okay, cool. All right, next up, we have Tara Corsi from the Canard African American Cultural Heritage Center about their Juneteenth celebration.
Good evening. Evening. Thank you so much for having me. One, I regret not introducing myself sooner, but I am the new executive director of Canard. I came on board early in February, so it's a pleasure to be in front of you to raise awareness about our upcoming Juneteenth Festival. I don't have any asks today. So I'm inviting you to join Canard African American Cultural Heritage Center on next Saturday, the 14th, for our annual Juneteenth celebration. This is a free, family-friendly event that commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African Americans with a full day of culture, community, and celebration, and it's between 8:00 and 4:00 a.m. next Saturday. I'll just give you a highlight of some of the things that'll be taking place that day. We'll be offering a breakfast buffet and just asking for a $5 donation. Of course, all proceeds benefit Canard for our events going forward, et cetera. That starts at 8:00 a.m. We'll also be offering free Father's Day haircuts starting at the same time. So there's a collection of local barbers that have volunteered their time in the morning to offer free haircuts to anyone that gets in line for it. We're also going to have a parade that starts at 10:00 a.m. They're going to assemble at the high school and then make their way down to Little Kid Wells. So that'll be eventful, lots of cars and community groups, et cetera. So that starts at 10:00 a.m. Our opening ceremonies will begin at 12:00 noon. So we'll do some announcements, and we'll also have a ton of activities for kids, a free basketball clinic where they can register on-site to participate. There's also going to be line dancing, demonstrations, performers. We're going to have a DJ. It's going to be, you know, festival-like, so it's going to be a lot of things taking place throughout the day. One really, really cool thing that we've added this year, I don't know if you're familiar with the One Maryland One book. It's sponsored by the Institute of Museum and Library Services and Maryland Humanities, and every year, they select an author, and they pick a book of that for that author, and they recommend, you know, the libraries push it out, that all of Maryland is reading the same book. The author that was selected this year will be at our event this year, and she'll be doing a reading for us and book signings. Her name is Carol Boston Weatherford, and the book that was selected is called Ken. So she will be on-site. We'll also have another author. Her name is Dr. Claire Small. She's renowned on the shore for documenting a lot of history. She's a former professor down at UMass, so she'll also be doing a reading and signing that day as well. And we'll have a full list of events, obviously, on our Facebook and our website, maps to different vendors. There'll be cultural vendors, resource vendors will be there. We'll have food trucks as well. Am I missing anything? I don't think so. So we do invite you to push that information out for us, potentially come join us. There's a full day of events. If you pop in, see what we've got going on, and hopefully we'll see you there.
Awesome. Yeah, my family, we've gone the last couple years. It's a lot of fun, so I'm sure we'll be there. My kids can't resist. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. And we can push that out, right?
Yeah. Do you have a flyer?
I can. I can forward that over to you.
Did you, did you talk to Gay before about getting on the-
Actually, Jen is responsible for getting me in the room.
Oh, okay.
So she's helping me. So we'll get it over.
Yeah.
Send it over to us, and we'll put it on our website, and we'll send it out in the
email blast.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So many appearances tonight. One of our all-time favorite appearers, Cara Willis.
And she doesn't have a PowerPoint.
Watch her have one. You don't know yet. She's on the tier.
This is my next trip. First of all, let me apologize. My voice is a little hoarse. I blame it on allergies or the fact that I've had an intern for the past two weeks, and it's making me realize how much I don't talk at work normally. So just bear with me. Okay.
Go for it.
So I think what you have in front of you is a form that is requesting a road closure on Front Street for an event.
They don't have a form.
Okay, form, okay. Well, then if you don't have it, sorry. So on July 12th, we, I am planning an event, and due to the nature of the one-way street, oh, sorry, it's not a one-way street, it's a dead-end street, the turnaround part could become problematic if we have guests that are sort of in the, you know, in the pavilion or the parking area, da-da-da-da. So we've talked to the neighbors, the other two neighbors on the street, and they are more than happy to have the road closed. Actually, that wouldn't affect them. The plan, the request would be to close it off right after the driveway that would go, that goes to the house on the waterfront, and then the end of the street would be, would be closed for the event. There isn't going to be any beverages or food served on town property. It's just more for, you know, overflow and part of the event. So I think the, normally, this would have been me just coming in and asking for a permit to have a, you know, to reserve the pavilion itself, but because of the road closure with the safety issues, I just, you know, this is kind of what it turned into because I guess this is a new thing. You want street closures, so.
Yeah, we have a form now.
Yeah, there's a form. There's an insurance liability requirement. Yep, so.
We've gone legit.
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Literally.
Yeah, literally. I've had people ask me, like, "You have to go through all this to get a, you know, to just do a street closure?" And I said, "Well, you should have understood." I mean, I think that from a safety standpoint, and, you know, the police should know if there's going to be an event, and then, you know, and then the council should know if someone comes by, like, "Hey, I don't know, there's a street closure down at the end of the, down at the end of town."
It's amazing what people call the town about.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. What's the timing? Sorry, did, I didn't hear it.
About 4:00, well, 4:30.
Until.
Until.
Yeah, until. Yeah, we've got a couple different-
Until the noise ordinance is in 11:30.
A couple different things that are happening.
Right?
Police ordinance goes into effect at 11:30.
Police ordinance goes into effect at 11:00. Yeah, I'm aware of that. I don't think that's going to be an issue.
So no, like screaming in the street after that?
No. No, I don't believe so. No, not after 11:00.
They'll just head over to docks or something.
And Cara has done the form, I assume?
Cara has done, the form is all completed. She's paid her fee, and her insurance is in there, and yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to allow for the street closure?
I make a motion to close Front Street on July 12, 2025, from, I would say, 4:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m.
Cool. Could we have a second?
One second there.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then just because I'm not really sure how this works, does, we can, we can, like, close it off ourselves, but I didn't know if there's some kind of formal way that a street needs to get closed off in town. Like, does that have to be sanctioned, Town of Centerville cones, or, you know, can I just, like, pull a kayak trailer across?
You'll go put a barric- You'll go put a barricade out there.
I think what we did in the past, and maybe the homeowners have provided a book, we put a few cones across. Um, because I think there was some traffic coming and going, so it made it extremely easy for them to just.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was the entirety of the street, I think, so a little bit different. Yeah, this is just gonna be.
You can work that out with cones or something.
Okay, just to make it official.
Okay, see how legitimate we are. We have our own cones.
All right, is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
I'm outta here.
All right, council. Next up, we have ordinance zero seven twenty twenty-five, the F Y twenty-six budget. This is second reading and consideration. And we'll have our finance officer come up in case of any questions.
All right, so, um, this is the ordinance for the F Y twenty-six budget. It keeps the current, um, property tax rate at fifty-three and a half cents. It keeps the current public utility tax rate at thirteen dollars per hundred of assessed value. The only change on the operating side seen from the last, um, from the budget hearing was the adjustment of the salary line into, um, B ten for promotions, um, of thirteen two seventy-five. So the total capital for F Y twenty-six will be three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The total capital for the enterprise fund, sorry, that was the general fund, for the enterprise fund will be a hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, the total grant funded projects is four million, six hundred and twenty-five, two fifty. I will just, um, reassure or re-say that from last time, the land purchase that's in there is not a grant funded, but it's what's on the five year budget. So to make this sheet and that sheet match, um, I can definitely add the comment on there if you'd like, just so that we know.
It's not a grant.
Verbally is.
Yeah, so, um, so in total for F Y twenty-six, the, uh, general fund operating budget with all inclusive has a transfer to fund balance of eighty-seven thousand, six oh five. And the enterprise fund has a transfer to fund balance of a hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Any questions for Cara? I just wanna say again what an organized and professional, great budget process this was. It just felt, we all like, we're all, yeah.
We try, we're trying to make it as seamless every year's, uh, cause I know there's a lot that you guys have to see and look at and touch, so thank you for your support and along the process as well.
Yeah, we just appreciate Carolyn, your leadership and all the department heads for making it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It was good. Okay.
Everybody works well. Thank you.
Do we have a, this is on our agenda for consideration, so do we have a motion to approve the budget? Don't all go at once.
I move approval.
I'm just gonna say, can I make a motion? All right.
We're gonna wait for, yeah.
Second. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Uh, council member Beecham.
Yes.
Council member Huffer.
Yes.
Yes, council member Keel. Council member Ware.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the second reading of ordinance zero nine twenty twenty-five, which is the dangerous buildings. Ordinance to allow us to put liens and take these to tax sale if we have to repair or demolish buildings.
So it takes off having to do judgments through the court and, um, yeah.
It gives us the same authority that most local governments enjoy. And this is, we still have a hearing on this, yes?
Right, that's scheduled for the twenty-sixth.
Okay, so we'll have a public hearing on this on June twenty-sixth. All right, next up, under new business, we have ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five. This has been a long time coming, the deed of dedication for the end of Green Street, uh, to turn it over to the town. I like still remain baffled how this ever went from the county to the Y M C A, I don't know, and now to us. It's part of a town street. We maintain it. We, we pass no on it. We, it's literally the end of the street I live on, so I think.
That tiny little piece there.
That tiny little piece, yep.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
But it's got a residence driveway on it, so that being private property of the Y M C A is profoundly strange.
Okay.
Yeah. And we did, which I did not include in here, as part of the agreement between the Y M C A and the county, the Y M, or the county is required to approve the Y M C A if they get rid of any property. We did receive a letter from the county commissioners approving this, which I did not include in here. I apologize, but I can always send it.
Well, we have to have a public hearing on this, right?
Yes, we do.
So just an F Y I. on that, more to come.
Can we have a map of the area to be needed as well as the survey notes?
Um, Jim, you probably, because, yeah, I printed out one and it put it in the packets tonight and I apologize, I should have emailed it to you. But yes, there is, there is a, a map. We, at the, Dan requested it and I said, I totally forgot to do that. So, um, I will email to you and it's, and it'll be in the rest of the packets.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, encumbrance of capital. Karen, you're back up.
I wanna talk to you guys all night. All right, in the current F Y twenty-six capital budget, we did have a brochure updating and trail investing line item for three thousand dollars. It has not been expended currently. Um, it's anticipated the project will begin in F Y twenty-six. It's uncertain if the funds will be utilized by the end of this year. So after consulting with the Parks Board, they have indicated they've, that given the annexation of Providence and Centerville's and its significance proposed trail system, the new Mill Stream Two trail coming soon and the upgrades to the Wharf Park, they wanna wait till these are mappable, um, to add them to this update. So we would like to encumber these funds into F Y twenty-six.
Okay. And there's plenty of old, apparently too, talking at the, uh, the, um, at the board, so there's a lot of still of stock left.
Yeah.
So there's no reason to rush into it as well, so, yeah.
Definitely something that hasn't been done, you know, this will be, I think this will be a great thing once we are able to get all the pieces together.
So if I may, and I can follow up as far as, how are they distributed? Just at Town Hall? Or, I mean, are there other ways it happens or? Right now at Town Hall, I don't know if we have, we probably have some in, um, the tourist, um, or we used to, I don't know if there's still, yeah, when we had our economic development manager, she kind of distributed them around, um, but I'm not sure where else they are right now.
Do you have them in the kiosk in, uh, the outlet?
I have not distributed any myself personally, so I'm not sure where they.
Do you have them in the kiosk in?
At the outlets?
Kiosk at the outlets. Yeah, that would be. Yeah, I think that may be part of it. I mean, I'm just guessing, but as far as just distributing and getting them out so people are aware of the, you know, of the different sites here on the trail. So that would be great, I think, to distribute more.
We should have them out at the farmer's market, too.
Yeah.
And first Friday, like, stick them out.
Absolutely. Yeah, terrific.
Cool. So you need a motion from us?
Yes, please.
I, I, uh, motion to encumber these, uh, funds in the following year and after this year, uh, for three thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Cool.
Thank you.
Oh, you're up next again, okay. Uh, let's talk about solar.
All right, um, you know, this is a subject I'm not, I don't know a whole ton about, but we have had solar in general, not the memo, I'm sorry. Um, so we have had two companies reach out to us, oh, in the past six months and, and set up meetings, um, with us to kind of discuss, um, the solar array and the Empower Maryland. So Solar Simplified and Solar on Earth has, has approached us. We've had meetings with them. Uh, Solar Simplified is a national community solar aggregator that partners with municipalities to deliver solar energy solutions. Solar on Earth offers community solar programs that allows individuals and businesses to subscribe to these local solar farms. Both companies offer similar programs such as getting reductions on your electricity bill for the town and its residents. Um, they have local administrators that will be available to answer any questions and, I just lost my spot, sorry, a simplified enrollment process for subscribers. So the main difference, um, after we met with these and then Carolyn and I and, um, Kip discussed really were the, um, Solar Simplified offered a month to month contract, so it was something you could get on if you wanted to. If you didn't like it, you can get right back off of it. Um, Solar on Earth did an annual. Um, they have immediate credits that are applied directly to your power bill, so it's not like you're dealing with two different bills. And the big thing for us, um, Solar Simplified offered a fifty dollar credit to the town for each resident that did sign up and try the service out. Um, so why partner with Solar Simplify, which is who we kind of would like to recommend based on the fact that we could get in the contract if we didn't like it, we could get out of it. It gives a automatic ten percent reduction to our utility bills in the town, as well as when residents sign up, they would see the same ten percent reduction on their bill as well. And I was looking at, uh, Delmarva Power bill today, so I didn't print this out, I apologize. But if you ever look on your power bill, there's an Empower Maryland. There's an Empower Maryland charge on there, and so this is part of the Maryland cert, the solar program. So you're paying this on your bill and it helps to create these solar farms that they then contract with local municipalities and residents to reduce. It helps Delmarva Power because they, I don't wanna say overuse electricity, but they are supposed to be looking for other ways to, you know, to do it.
Is it okay if we wait on this?
Yes, absolutely.
I have some questions. I know the solar farm issue right now is they're trying to take it to referendum. That, that's a big one.
Yeah.
When I was an energy lobbyist, we regularly warned customers against buying your energy from anyone other than the utility. And I mean, I was representing the utilities, so like, for sure, that could have just been, yeah. I was doing a job I was hired to do, I don't know. Didn't really ask a lot of details, but I would, I would like to just, I have a friend who's still a utility lobbyist. I would love to get his take. I would love to talk to Steve Klein and E S L C and see if this raises any red flags for them.
Okay.
On the whole solar farm issue and, I, I mean, I would love for us to save money on our electric bills, but maybe not at the expense of all of our farms turning into solar farms, so.
Yeah, and absolutely. For us, it was like, and since they've reached out, they, I would say, continue to reach out, but.
They continue to reach out.
Yes, so we, you know.
Talking, this doesn't really get in the world.
So Sharon did review the agreements and, and said, she advised, hey, let's go to council, let's see what they say. So we absolutely don't have to do anything. You just let me know if you come up with anything, if you wanna.
Yeah, I would just love to learn more.
Yep.
Personally.
Yeah, and, um, so this is happening already, cause you, in your letter, you know, Sol, in Salisbury and Pokemop will be, so is any of this happening?
Yeah, I mean.
So they're already doing. Not, not with the town.
Right, not with the.
No, 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 other towns, other municipalities, that's what I'm saying, as far as how it's working for them.
So far, and you know, like, I've reached out to Salisbury a little bit. I'm waiting for the finance director to get back to me on some information on how it worked. Cause it's more for their residents as opposed for the city itself. And so when we were broached the first time, you know, I, I didn't realize it could be a municipality thing and I think it's more newer on that aspect than it is resident specific. So I've been trying to do a little more research myself and.
With M M L around the corner, this would be a good, to ask other municipalities at E S A M.
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah. And so I just wanted to broach this subject and put it out there by absolute no rush. We don't have to do anything. I just wanted you to be aware that, you know, they're, I don't wanna say breathing down our necks, but kind of, and I get it, if, you know, wanna help residents out, but I wanna do it the right way, so.
Yeah, so that'll give us some time. M M L is before our next meeting, so we can all, uh, do some learning and digging and.
I'll do some more, too, as well, to see what I can.
Yeah, a whole bunch of you are going to M M L, too, so yeah, whatever you guys can learn there and then.
Maybe we can regroup. I'll regroup with you after and then we can.
Yep. So you, would you like, you want it added to the June twenty-six agenda, back on agenda?
Yes, please.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jim, I, you were over there. Did you have any questions for me?
No, the way the conversation went, uh, is great. I am looking forward to be involved in the discussions.
Okay, awesome. Awesome, thanks, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next up, water allocations on Spring Street.
Spring Street, so, um, Spring Street, well, it was one twenty-four Spring Street. It was renumbered, um, by the county after, um, it was purchased, there was a.
That's off Little Kidwell, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so this is the old American Legion property. Um, so it was purchased, um, the person who purchased this, purchased it, demolished, has demolished the Legion. And he has gone before the planning commission. He, um, was, uh, approved for subdivision, so he's ready to start building. And, um, so it's a little bit, um, weird because there was already a water allocation on that property. They had a private septic, uh, which has been abandoned. Approved by the, uh, health department. And so they, he needs a sewer allocation for the one lot and then a water and sewer allocation for the second lot. He, Kip and I had a meeting with the owner, uh, last week, I think it was, went over all of this. Kip talked to him about what needs to be done and he is, uh, Kip is in agreement with the allocations. I actually think he may, it may have been on that list of proposed projects when he went over the remaining allocations we have. I think it was, actually. I was thinking back at that, yeah. So, um, so this is just a request for, um, one water allocation and, um, two water allocations, actually, and one sewer allocation. And just to, well, one, you know, I support infill in the town, so I think that's really good. Um, so that's a positive thing. And I'm trying, what's the next process? Has the builder, as far as once they know they have this, then they'll submit house design and all? Would that go to the planning commission or? No, it goes to us. So we've talked to him about, um, actually, we were lucky enough to have the meeting at the Wharf. So Betty Jean had her little, her ears up and came out and, um, went over and said, you can't have the same house side by side, the same. So she went over the design standards. She was really good, um, with him, so he does understand what he can and cannot do based on our, based on our design standards, so, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
Good. And, you know, no blank walls and the, um, yes. And, uh, you know, we, the design elements that have to be on those walls, she went over all that with them, so.
Great.
Terrific, yeah, just, is it a local? Yes, yeah, he is local. Can't, I couldn't remember.
Cool, great. Do we have a motion? There's a proposed motion.
I move to approve one water allocation and one sewer allocation for one thirty-two Spring Street and one sewer allocation for one thirty-eight Spring Street.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, got a thumbs up from council member Beecham. Okay, next up is our town council meeting summer schedule. As Carolyn reminds us in the memo, we moved our meeting that would have been on June nineteenth to June twenty-six because of the holiday on the nineteenth. And then we had kind of already talked about not meeting on July third.
Right.
Since it's the night before the, the July fourth holiday. So my suggestion, and let's talk about it, would be to meet on July tenth and August seventh. That doesn't, that doesn't give too, too much time between meetings. It gives two weeks after the June meeting and then a little less than a month in between the others. With the possibility of a T N D. work session in that mix as well, depending on what we get.
We, we would just schedule those later?
Because we don't know when we're gonna have the, from the planning commission, right?
Well, if, okay. That's true, but there's things we can learn. I mean, they're, they're, they're probably like, what, ninety percent finished? Would you, I, I mean, I, I missed the last two. Council member Huffer.
If you wanna have the chair up.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, do you wanna come up? Coming up. Trying to save your voice, but no luck.
Yes, I suspect it won't.
Kick her out.
Be ready for your next meeting.
Council vice president Keel says you're not on the agenda.
I doubt it'll be ready for that meeting, so. But I'll, I'll allow it.
Yeah, no, we understand the, uh, council's summer schedule. Uh, we're still working diligently. We're, um, kind of, the stage that we're at right now is we've gotten feedback from a bunch of different entities, uh, the developers and kind of, kind of their wish list. And then the county is another part of this, so it's been a little bit more that's come at us all, all of a sudden, that's created a bit more discussion. Um, so, so what, where it is right now is, um, Sharon is, has the draft as it sat last. Um, she's gonna sort of, uh, I guess, bullet point the, the outstanding, uh, things that we, that are kind of really gonna be crucial to, um, the county and, you know, and, and things we need to discuss. So I am aiming to have it, let's see, if, if we do, we've got a work session next week and then the regular meeting, I don't know much. Uh, you've got a meeting in July, right?
July.
July.
Ten, we're shooting for.
Right.
Yeah, well, I won't be there, cause that's my birthday.
You don't wanna spend your birthday with us?
At the end of June, right, so.
Yeah.
End of July sounds more realistic.
Probably.
Yeah, in time for our August meeting, right.
Okay, so what if?
Right.
What if we just had a work session before our August seventh meeting? What if we just had a work session before our August seventh meeting? Is that, yes, no?
You mean the same day, just earlier, or you mean like, a different day? Okay.
I was saying like that, like, we do real budget.
I actually think you need to do it earlier. The, and I don't have it in front of me, the timeline that Sharon and I reviewed with the planning commission, if, you guys basically need to have your first reading in August in order to meet the, once the twenty-one days passes for it to be enacted, because it's going to be October ninth. So the, is when the moratorium ends.
Okay. So what if we had our council business meeting on July tenth, and then had a work session on July seventeenth, which would have originally been a council meeting night?
I would do it.
Does that work for people?
So work session on July seventeenth?
Yeah.
Well, let me see.
Before the meeting, or?
No meeting, I'm saying.
No meeting, just work session.
Just work session.
Hold on a minute.
Because I, I'm going to be coming straight from DC, so I don't know if I could get here in two hours.
Oh, yeah, that would be the day after the planning commission meeting?
I mean, I mean, there's, there's like a point here where we have to...
Yeah, you have to...
Well, maybe, what about the twenty, what about the twenty-fourth?
I'm not, I won't be here the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I don't think I can do the twenty-fourth there.
Thirty-first.
I can do thirty-first.
Thirty-first?
I don't have my calendar like that, hold on.
It would just, yeah.
Okay, I guess the question is, if we can get it wrapped up and sort of packaged for you ideally by July sixteenth, that would, you know, if you did a work session the next day, I don't know if that would give you enough time to really absorb, or if the work session for the, is kind of to do your preliminary discussion and then it's...
I could do July thirty-first.
I could, too.
Carolyn, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, so we're saying July thirty-first?
For a work session.
For a work session.
So nothing on the seventeenth?
Right.
July thirty-first.
So we'll meet...
Um, yes, that is available, okay.
We'll meet June twenty-sixth, July tenth, and August seventh for official council business meetings, and we will meet July thirty-first for a TND work session.
Should we start earlier on the thirty-first, like five-ish, you know, like we would for a budget work session?
I would.
I think, yeah.
I can do five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. It'll probably take more than a couple hours, I think.
I'm super pumped for that, okay.
All right.
That works, and you'll find out, maybe we meet at the Wharf?
Um, yeah, these dates...
I'd say for a work session at the city, like, this isn't really conducive to a work session.
Well, I, I checked with the county on the dates that are available, that's why I have those down there, but it is much easier at the Wharf, sitting around the table, doing a work session.
The public could still be in there, so...
Yes, yes. So, yeah, we can do it at the Wharf.
Okay, let's do it at the Wharf.
Okay.
That works, thank you. Appreciate all the work the planning commission has put into this. I know it's not been easy.
No.
Okay. Reports of boards and commissions, Maryland Municipal League.
So I'm sure there's latency in the connection here, but I assume that you each have received an email from MML today. Know before you go was the subject, which is a little, little heads up on what you might encounter at MML, and if any members of staff don't have access to that, let me know, and I'll be happy to forward the email to y'all. It's coming up. I understand there is a GIS symposium at MML this year, and I think the town recently invested in some GIS software, so this would be a great time to, to learn about that, anybody that's interested. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is council of governments.
I have nothing, our next meeting is September tenth. It's hosted by the county, correct?
Correct. Right. Economic development, I need to meet with you and Carol, Carolyn and Carol, to talk about recruiting the like, super specific ones, reaching out to the Arts Council and getting their person, reaching out to Bay Area Realtors to see maybe who they might recommend for that person, and just really putting some time around that. So that's, you know, my fault that that's kind of lagging, but I will put some focus on that as my work travel slows down here for the summer. Park Advisory Board?
Nothing really new to report, consistent. I mean, things are moving along on the bandshelf as far as just the process. And so, and, you know, it will be done this year, it's just a matter of when it will be done, because bids will have to be done, and then the Critical Area Commission will have to, you know, that review, so, but nothing, nothing more to really report from, from the last meeting. There'll be more to come, but not as of now.
Okay. Planning Commission?
Yeah, I did make it to the planning commission meeting, and they approved the subdivision of the Corsoil Drive Shopping Center. They are working on revised draft to the comprehensive, comprehensive signage plan, mainly to include a monument sign for shopping centers, trying to generalize that, you know, not trying to make it so specific for this one shopping center. So, especially the issue of advertising off-site, this current code doesn't allow off-site advertising, so this would be, since there's three separate lots, really, so. Then they decided to defer the election of officers till this month, till later this month, and, yeah, till their regular meeting at the end of the month. And then they reviewed draft of their annual report, and they scheduled, they rescheduled their work, they normally would have their work session last week, it's scheduled for next week instead, actually, it would have been yesterday, but, yeah, on the eleventh.
Cool.
And that is all.
Okay. Reports of department heads, Town Manager?
I actually have quite a few things, sorry.
Killing us.
So I had an introductory meeting today with our representative from Julie Parker Communications to start our communication, plan, audit, Facebook page, all that. So we're going to start with the plan and the audit. So we've got a few steps in place of how we're going to move forward. The first is, she wants to do a survey with staff, and I can actually send it to council , too, and it's basically what do we want to see on our Facebook pages, on our social media pages, what are our priorities? And that kind of goes into our, our plan. We had a, staff met with EPA for our other round of federal earmark money, which was for the streets that we received. So we just want to review the process about what needs to happen when we're ready to start spending that money. Attended the Corsica Implementers Meeting along with some other staff, and Sandy attended as well. So we gave them a update, current update on our wastewater treatment plant. The staff had a tour with MDE this past week, a couple members from MDE came and toured our plant. They had a few more questions with our preliminary engineering report, so we submitted an amendment to that. We're still waiting for our final approval for that. We're still working on the mixing study, and that should be done hopefully sometime in July. Sandy had originally asked for like a six-month, every six-month update on the treatment plant, so I did ask her, can we, we're going to move it to July. We're, fingers crossed, still hoping our PER will be approved by then. And then, so we spoke to them about the State Highway property, we're still working on a deed, they, they still have the deed. So that was the, the main points of that meeting. Talked about the comprehensive plan and that being completed, and the amendments that were, updates that were just done with that, annexation of Providence. And then there was a presentation by Owen Bailey for the E-three, can't remember what the E stands for now, but, which our planning commission had received that as well, it's really interesting.
Right.
And then an update on what Shore Rivers is doing, so. Gay, Laura, Anthony from the Police Department, and I attended a social media training last week in Pennsylvania, it was really, really good training. So we got a lot of great information, good ideas, talked a lot about the need for archiving, you know, we're required to archive all of that, and found out that basically the archiving provider that everyone recommends is actually our website provider, our website offers that same service. So Gay's looking into pricing on, you know, what they're, what they are, would require. Still working with the owners of one oh-two South Commerce Street, we're trying to finalize some of the construction plans, the basement foundation, they're, they have been permitted to do that work, so they're still completing some of that. Gay and I completed our last character count sessions last month, so that was a little sad, a little sad and happy at the same time, but we had precares, and it was really, I loved it. And then Kip was unable to attend tonight, so he wanted me to, oh, where's my little score? They gave me a little write-up about, they wanted to talk about the touch-a-truck event, which was this past Saturday, the thirty-first. Everyone has been talking about what a success it was, and how many kids, they know, we had over a hundred and fifty kids because all the construction hats disappeared that were given out to the kids. They had over fifteen vendors and food trucks, they received positive feedback from all of them, everyone is at, was asking if they were doing it again next year, and I think there was even a lady whose child fell asleep, and she asked, since it started raining and they had to leave, if they were going to do the rain date next week, because her daughter didn't get a chance to. Everyone was really excited about it, and they've already received, like, I want to, I want to be a part of it next year and all that. So huge thank you to all the town staff, because they really did a good job, Police Department, Public Works. So, great job.
And I heard a ton of really positive feedback from like, families that went, it's awesome.
Yeah. And I think, I think I'm done.
Okay. Chief of Police?
Sure.
I think so.
Good evening, First Responder. I don't have a report for council this evening, however, I would like to say thank you again for your continued support of not only the Police Department, but our Town Department Heads and staff. It goes along, and it certainly doesn't go unnoticed. And as we hear a lot in the first responder world, thank you for our service, I would like to thank the council for their service to their community, it goes a long way, it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you again.
Thanks, Chief.
If anybody has any questions for me tonight?
We told them I couldn't ask you any questions tonight.
No questions for me.
Yeah.
Thank you all again.
Thank you, Chief. Town Attorney?
The only item I have is, as Councilwoman Beecham mentioned, I did prepare an updated version with the most current changes of the ordinance currently labeled eight, oh-eight, twenty-twenty-five about the non-self-propelled vehicles. The only, there was a section that had been drafted for consideration that never made it to introduction in the meeting. So we've turned those provisions into a sheet that's behind the current draft, that says Amendment one and Amendment two. And then there's only one other change on the second page, there's a word in red, there was a missing word that we found.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I had made a suggestion to Will earlier, and the council, I'm not sure if we shouldn't just start all over with a new ordinance number, like...
I thought Sharon said we had to.
Okay.
Because time ran out. But we still want to consider it as an original, as a draft and amendments, rather than, because there's consensus, I think, around some of the meat of the total ordinance, and maybe not the amendments. Correct, Councilmember Beecham? That was our thought process?
That's my understanding as well. We had talked about each of the items that are presented as possible amendments, but I wanted to make sure we had confirmed approval or non-approval of each of those two items. And it is a new ordinance number, we started out as oh-two, and this one is oh-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
It's been a lot of work this year. Thank you for your work on this, Councilmember Beecham, and I'll look forward to us discussing it at the June twenty-sixth meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Main Street Manager? Big weekend in Centerville.
Yeah, coming up.
Yes.
I decided not to bring notes, and I can just read from my poster.
Do whatever the opposite of a rain dance is.
Yeah.
We just refer to it as the R-word. We don't even say all the letters. So, just three short notes. Our generosity of our businesses and organizations who have supported the event, we are at eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. As I had mentioned, in our anticipated budget, our goal is sixty, sixty-one hundred, so we've exceeded that, so we're super excited about that. Everyone's excited about the event, and it, it always reinforces my belief in how strong our community is and how everyone really wants to come together. The VIP experience at the Bull and Goat is pretty awesome. Not only do we have the Bull and Goat hosting, but we have food from Mama Mia's, Basha Steampot, Unamas, and Doc's Riverside Grill, and their pairings also with Co. Wine. And Val and Rick has donated their, or is lending us their hot boxes, so we got everyone sort of pitching in there, so. We still have tickets available, so if folks want to go, I know Sandy's going, she's excited. If you want to go to do a little something different at the event, you can, you actually have three ways to go. You can go as a, for free, so you can enjoy the event for free, you can buy a tasting cast, or you can go to the VIP experience. And the last thing is on our volunteers. So I had put a call out for volunteers, we have two people who are completely new to the community, one has moved from Orlando, and the other has moved from Upper Marion in Pennsylvania. Both said almost exactly the same thing, that they wanted to come and volunteer and meet new people. As much as it's important for us to retain our heritage, our rural heritage, every day I'm hearing more and more people come from other areas, and they're, they're contributing right away. So I think it says a lot for the people who are, who are moving here, that they're ready to roll up their sleeves and get involved, so. It's pretty awesome. That's all I had?
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
It'll be good.
All right. Thank you.
All right, now we have a citizens forum, citizens are requested to keep their comments to three minutes, if there are anyone that wishes to address the council. You got anything else? Okay. Council Roundtable, Council Vice President Keel?
I have a couple things. I've heard a lot of complaints about the Acme parking lot, I don't know if anybody else has.
Yeah, I have my own complaints.
Anyway, is there any way that we can send the letter to the property, the property management company, I'm pretty sure they, to say we've, we've received a lot of complaints about your parking lot, can you please fix it?
I think Finn could stand in those potholes, and it might be over his head.
Yes. And the second one is, send the letter to State Highway, because we have a part of a road that's failing right by Academy Lane on North Liberty. If you ride right past Academy Lane, you'll see two potholes forming, the road's actually failing. Yes, so if we can send a letter to State Highway about that. And I also want to say how good a job that the two officers did Saturday, Sunday, early Sunday morning. He did a good job.
All right. Councilmember Beecham?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Worth?
Uh, nothing here.
Councilmember Hofer?
Nothing, thank you.